All right, well, that clock back there says 6 o'clock. I don't know if it's right or not, but we're gonna go by it. So we'll go ahead and get started with our pledge, and then Commissioner Patton do our prayer.
My pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Lord, we come before your body throne this evening, ask you your blessings upon us as we enter into this meeting. Ask you to give us compassion and understanding to do the things that best needed for the citizens of this community. We pray, Father, your blessings upon our nation. Have you remember 21 years ago, the terrible things that happened? May always be in our hearts and always look to be better than what we have been in the past. To withenow to our God and direct us, in Christ's name. Amen.
Welcome you all out tonight, and our first item of business is approval of minutes.
Go ahead, Sam.
You want a second? I'll make it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Who pay all bills?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Old business, there is nothing under new business. First item is the new sanitation truck.
We've had some issues out of both of them, out of our old trucks. Both of them are up and going down again. The turbo went out of the newer truck. The cylinders started leaking on the old truck. Both are repaired and fixed. Got prices of a new truck of a 11-yard, which would be a smaller size truck. It would be one size under the CDO limits, where we wouldn't have to have to have a CDO driver, but that's getting to be an issue. Not asking for any action, or this was more just a fact-founding mission for me to report to y'all. This, you know, the 20-yard truck we bought in 2014, 15, or 16 was about $168,000. So here it is, 2022, and a smaller truck, 11-yard truck, is $185,000. So we will be, it will be the cycle time to buy a new one in two or three years. Just don't do any action on it yet.
What kind of truck is it?
The one we have.
No, this?
It's also a freelineer.
How many more trips do you have to make, Larry?
Well, what we would have to do, we would have to make, same as we're doing on Tuesday, Wednesday, one trip each. And what we would probably do is take Thursday route and divide it into two days. That way, it would be one trip per day. It's actually benefited us going from a two-day pickup to a three-day pickup. The guys are, you can't do a whole lot of mowing with the dew on the grass, so while they're picking up trash, they get off 11, between 11 and 12, they get off there at a certain moment. It's actually benefited us. They're not tired all week long. They kept picking up 28 ton. Now they're just doing a whole lot less tons each day. They do, they did tell me they have their first battery-powered truck on the lot, just for the chassis, and they have, there's no compactor on it, $650,000.
They can keep that one, but we want to go green because it's cheaper.
The batteries add an additional 8,000 pounds of truck. The batteries on the truck adds an additional 8,000 pounds.
And just think of the resources it took to make those batteries, but that's okay.
Yeah. We have no charge in California.
Not after, not between 4 and 6?
I just don't know about them.
Anyway.
Okay.
They're better off on a bicycle. Them numbers are just for me to look. I should have taken this off before tonight, but I'm just curious what it was. Anyway.
But probably is a good idea to think, when we do get ready to think about, think about the size down just because of the CDO, because that's going to get more difficult. But then again, on the other end, it may not, because there'll be no more trucks left.
You know, it would actually be cheaper, because we would still do our grid testing on our employees.
Well, yeah, that's-
With the CDO, with the CDL testing, it's every quarter. So someone's going to be picked, or this it would not be. So it would save a couple hundred dollars a quarter, just on that.
Okay. Next item is Carl Renfro.
Yes, we hired Carl Renfro, and I failed to bring it up at the last meeting. He was hired on August the 2nd. I would ask that we make him full-time retroactive to that date. I think that Amy told me he's making $11.50 in an hour. So he would go from $11.50 to 12 after his 90 days.
What's he doing?
Sanitation.
I'll make a motion that we hire him-
Second.
-retroactive August the 2nd?
Yes.
At the rate of?
I think $11.50, is what Amy told me.
$11.50 in when does he go to?
90 days would be November, December, be January, probably September, October, November.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Carl?
Carl Kenny. He is the reason we hired Carl Renfro. Carl Kenny went to work for another company. He did not turn in the resignation later. We may have put on the agenda to have it done in minutes.
Do we need to do anything since he didn't turn in? Just accept the resignation of Carl Kenny?
Yes.
Effective, do we need the effective date?
Uh, Friday before, I guess it'd be last Friday.
Second.
Second. Yeah.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is online payment system. This is the Kentucky League of Cities. Shelby, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Okay, so we are looking at doing our water bills online. They, we can do water bills, what else?
Tax bills.
Property taxes. We can do a, we can upload like a map when we have the strawberry festival and the Oktoberfest, where the vendor can get on there, pick their spot, and pay it all online. It is a $2,500 setup fee, but that's it. There's no maintenance fee that we pay every year.
There's a, I forget the percentage on the credit card swipes-
Oh, the-
-that they get, but-
I think it's like 2.65%. And then there's a 55 cent fee with that as well that's added on. KLC gets their money in front of the fee, is how they make their money off of it.
They've been down here and done a demonstration, and the city of Versailles has already set up on it. They did the pilot program for it, and it's, I was quite impressed with the whole, how the whole thing worked. I was very much impressed with the fact there's no annual fees. We checked with some others, and some of them are some pretty hefty annual fees to keep that up. But this would be another tool we could use, where people could go on, like I say, they wouldn't have to commit, all the bills could be paid, whether it's code enforcement, fine, fire dues, anything could be paid online.
What about like, like tickets? Can they pay traffic tickets or anything?
Those don't come to the city.
Would it help, is it beneficial to get y'all in the office?
I would say it'd be very beneficial.
And I make a motion-
Well, I think it's time we need to get into the 21st century, and that's the first place to start.
I make a motion, we do the online payments.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. So can a person set it up to come out monthly, like my check, my water bills comes out monthly?
And it can go, another thing is, we can go to paperless billing, where they just, if they create an account on that website, they will get an email every month, hey, your bill is ready-
Nice.
-to be paid. And we can also do a thing where we can do underpayments, exact amount, and then overpayments. So that's very helpful. I personally would say overpayments is a no, because it's more of a headache than it is anything, so.
It's tough. When the bill's paid, it has to be split between water, sewer, and sanitation. And overpayments are harder.
I have to divide it up. You know, if their bill's a hundred dollars and they pay $200, I have to make sure that everything's divided up right and put it into the right account, so.
And this, this system will be separate. It'll do it. It'll give her a printout at the end of them. They're gonna do it weekly, right?
By the day. I have to do one at the end of the day, do, just do a daily report, either at the end of the day or the next morning. And then that would have all my information on it, account number, name, address, what they paid, and I can just put it in. We're talking about trying to get it to where I can just import that file into our billing system to where it's not as much time spent in doing that than it is, I would have more time to do other things.
Do you have many that overpay?
There's a few.
Wow.
They don't know what it is. They think it's about $150, so I'll pay $160 just to-
Gotcha, gotcha.
So there's, and I've had people come through the drive-through the last few weeks asking, are y'all gonna do this online? Everybody else is doing it. And like, we're working on it. Can't really tell you a date, so.
Well, what I liked about it, and like I say, Shelby and Amy and Lisa, even Amy was sold on it.
Well, she sold on it. That's good.
I won't say 100%, because she never gets sold on 100% on anything in terms of finances, but she was, she was kind of sold on it, because it was, it was designed by the IT people at KLC, so it was designed specifically for cities. So they know how to do it. It's not like some company that designs one, and you're going to do retail here and a municipal there. It's, they know what they were looking for, and they know how, when, at the end of the day, when she gets her printout, it'll, it'll all come, if they use a credit card or whatever, the payment goes through Stripe, which is a recognizable, recognizably known company. Huh? Oh, that's, I thought that. And at the end of the day, or I guess, they'll dump it into an account, and then Amy will have the ledger, the paperwork there, the printouts to know how much goes to move from, to put to sanitation, water, and sewer, so.
So when the check is written, how long will it take to get it to the county it does?
It won't be a check.
Oh, well, I guess what I'm getting at is penalties go on up to the 10th?
Yes.
And it pays online?
It will go on, like with the online payments, it will go on on the 10th of midnight. Like it'll be, like for me, you know, if they paid it online, like Saturday was the 10th, so if they paid it, went to go online and paid on the 10th, and then next thing, the 11th, if they didn't pay it, it's going to be on there. Where right now, if you drop in the night drop, you're fine until Monday rolls around. I do that deposit first, and then, so it will add the penalties-
Okay.
-right at midnight on the 10th, so.
I see.
Even if it's on a weekend?
See, on a weekend, we kind of waive it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, because I didn't add penalties until I got all of my night drop in this morning. So after I got the night drop in, then usually if somebody comes through the drive-through or comes in, I automatically take penalty thing, that could have put it in the night drop over the weekend, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. That's one thing, Dan, I've wanted to do for a long time. Now we can start working on a website. Next item is thermal imaging grant.
Yeah, every year, the thermal imaging grant comes available through Kentucky Fire Commission. Thermal imaging is camera views, find hot spots, anything puts on heat signatures. We've got to, both the ones we have, we've gotten through thermal imaging grant. We're awarded it. You're not allowed to go again for three to four years. Our time is up, so I'm just asking permission to file for the thermal imaging grant. Should be no match on this year. They've got to, they access the money, so kind of the first come, first served basis.
No match. I like that. I move to approve the thermal imaging grant.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. You can give all the paperwork yourself. Approval of the 2023 motor vehicle and watercraft property tax rate.
Is that in here?
Is that this, the convention board and all that?
Look at it.
It's on the desk here.
That's, that's property. That's not the-
That's not the other one?
Okay.
Nope, it is, is it? I don't see it.
Wait a minute, that? I don't see the personal one on here, Larry. Do you see it?
I don't have it. It's not my person.
I mean, for the motorcraft, I see the property.
Yeah.
The motorcraft's on here.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell us how much it is.
Is it the same as it was last year's, or going up, or what?
See, this is the one the state tells us what it is, and isn't that right, Larry?
Uh, yes.
So we might as well just go ahead and accept it, shouldn't we? Because we don't have a choice. We have to do what they say anyway.
Can we table that on my text, or over?
Okay, yeah. We'll table that and go into the water main, East 8th, East 10th.
I got, I got the maps here, if anybody wants to look at them. Everything looks like it's in order, ready for submit to the state.
How long will it turn around?
Six to eight weeks possibly.
Why are we stopping at 10th? Why, are we just fixing that one section? Is all we're doing? We're not going all up?
Well, is it new, new block up there at 10th on the-
I'm, I'm sorry, one of them, Larry?
Everything's north from 10th Street.
Oh, it is, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what, that three lanes is in. All that's new, when it did that, I would have moved over.
Right. And that's where we have-
That's where the leaks occur.
Yeah.
This is going to get down to 231, and it will be pretty much under the sidewalk. It will be a direction board for 10th.
And what are they planning on redoing the street?
They say that's part of it.
Not that far up, though. The only thing I know is from 62 West to Goshen Road, First Street to Goshen Road.
So they're not coming to the north end?
Not as, not that I'm aware of right now.
I thought they were. Shoot.
What's the holdup on it?
They're doing design work on it. They're, they're rebuilding. I mean, they're basically going to take it down to gravel and even down to dirt.
Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
Amy said, Amy said the vehicle, the watercraft stays the same. She says it's 24.1.
And that's set by the state, so that's-
So which one you want to do first?
She says, we can't raise it.
No, we know that. We just want to know what it was. Well, we'll go back to, but the, as far as 231, they're going to take it all the way down and put some new catch basins in, new drain in.
How far down, though?
From the stoplight, six, from First Street to Goshen Road.
They're moving some, move some water mains, too.
Okay, but then they're not going to go on and go on up Main Street to at least 62 on the other end?
Not as, not with this contract.
I was at the fiscal court meeting. The drainage and everything doubled the cost, and the regional director was there, couldn't believe that they applied for it and got it. Because just doing it was going to be like, over a million dollars, but doing all the drainage added like 1.5 or more.
Yeah, it's going to be about a $3 million project.
Yeah, it's like a $3 million.
How long will that get done?
Depends on weather and-
Detour.
Utilities, and I know, I don't know how they're going to do that.
How are they going to detour it to downtown?
I don't think they are. They're going to try to just do-
Do one lane at a time?
Do they have any idea when they might get started in?
I haven't heard.
Can I ask a dumb question?
They were hoping to start this-
I'm a creature black dog.
Uh, I don't know. Whenever they were at the fiscal court meeting, they talked about the whole thing. I don't remember which meeting it was, but I was there, I recorded it. So it's on there, and they, they specifically talked about it, because it was such a huge project.
Yeah, they'd hope to get the contracts to the point where they could let it this fall.
Yeah, because they, they had actually said, the work that they did up there was just to kind of get, get them through, and then they were going to come back. I feel like spring is when they were going to start. So every how long it takes to do that, they, they were talking like the, just doing all the extra drainage and things, things that they were doing was going to be, you know.
They're going above and beyond, because they're trying to get the water out from under and off of it.
Right.
They're going to put the crown back on the road. They're going, we're going to have the full six, seven-inch curb and gutters like we used to have before they paved.
There we can sidewalk, too?
No.
I was kind of hoping they did that, too.
Well, some of the, a lot of sidewalks are new.
I know.
Or newer.
But when you go start and changing the drainage, you may get up, end up tearing some of them.
Well, I'm sure they'll have to repair, replace some of it where they do catch drains and stuff, catch basins and what have you.
Well, it's a good project, but man, I hate it for downtown Beersville. It's going to be a mess.
Downtown's not going to be as bad as, I don't think, as it is going to be from about Third Street to Goshen Road. That's where it's going to be, really. That's where, that's where it's the worst at. Because one bad spot they used to always have down here in front of the bank, a lot of that's in a whole lot better shape now, just because over the years, with the trouble they did have, they kind of dug it out.
Does it need a motion to accept?
Larry, we, we don't even got a motion on that, do we? To go into the state.
We've already approved to do that.
Approve the project.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to see the plans or not.
Okay, we don't have to, yeah, okay.
Okay, back to the approval of the motor vehicle and watercraft.
I'll make a motion to approve the motor vehicle and water-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion pass. Next item is the 2022 property tax rate. Let me see it in front of you.
Yeah. Does anybody know which one we need to do?
What do you base a budget on?
The budget is based on the 4%-
4%.
Because we hired the seventh officer.
Yeah, we talked about all that.
I thought we, that's why I asked, which is one we're close to.
And it's a penny.
Yeah. I make a motion, we tell you, do the 4% increase?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Shelby, anything else?
Um, streets on the trail will be October 31st, 3:30 to 5:30 at Clark. Don't forget the KLC conference is next week.
October 31st?
October 31st.
I thought it was the last week. Is it next week?
The 20th through the 23rd.
Next week, mm-hmm.
What's the week of the next week?
Go ahead.
That's great, okay. I knew something was that week.
And then our billing system is having a conference, November 16th. I'm just asking for approval to go. It is $235 a person. It'll be over anything new that they have going on. They are looking to upgrade a few things, I think, so.
That's United Systems?
Yes. I feel like it would be helpful for me to go-
Where's it at?
In Bend, Kentucky.
Oh, big place.
One, one day training?
Yes, just one day, just the 16th.
I move to froze it. City clerk culture or conference.
It may not be a bad idea to send one of the girls, too.
What'd you say?
May not be a bad idea to send one of the other girls as well.
Will you re, city clerk plus one?
City clerk plus one.
Second, again.
Any further discussion?
One thing. That means we'll run three water meters on the 14th, and finish them by the 15th.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get it fixed.
Details. Great. Those in favor, say in favor of the aisle? Post same. Motion passes. Anything else, Shelby?
No.
Mike?
No, I want to report that Jamie's doing well. Her officer had a heart attack.
It was good to see. I saw him at the concert the other night. It was good to see.
Yeah, he, he can do something. So I agreed if he would stay back there and, and hold on to a post and not get a hold of nobody, I'd bless him. So anyway, but he helped, and but he's doing really good. His doctor's not releasing him yet, but he's expecting to be able to come back to work October the 9th. That will be long.
I hope so.
And just FYI, we've got one that is probably going to be leaving the first October. Paul Evans, his wife is taking some kind of job in Lexington. Her mother and father live up there, so that does babysitter. And I think it's an opportunity that he just couldn't, they couldn't afford to pass up. It's like a six-figure job. And he's been looking at some agencies up there in Lexington. I got a letter from UK police the last week one day.
Tell if he gets on at UK, just get his tickets.
Well, I think he has to get his ticket.
Did you see the concert coming up there? Chris Stapleton?
Oh, it right, yeah.
Yeah.
For the flood relief.
Because that's just, you know, he hasn't given me a definite date yet. So, but he has, he has told us, and I appreciate that, that he did tell us. Everything else is doing good, as far as I know. Everybody's doing all right. You too, Carter?
I think it's good.
Any update on our truck?
Just the last one that I got, in Brentonburg, or Brenton, or wherever that town is in sort of, just waiting to get in line for production.
Brayton.
Brayton, thank you. It's there.
Any, I don't, and you probably told me, but have they given you any kind of estimated date when it might arrive here?
The last I heard was November. The gentleman that sold us the truck, that was kind of over that, they had let him go. So during the process of finding a new rep, in the time being, they got me with the vice president of the company. He's keeping me updated. But they're still projecting November. I assume it's probably going to get pushed back, as it right now is still November. Originally, it was, I think, July or August.
Yeah. Okay. Sandy?
And they're still waiting on her to hit, to, one of the orders?
Probably December, isn't it? Maybe?
They said October, November.
Okay.
I had agreed to take it without the chip from the back, heat pattern in the back. And then it's going to be a long time for where we go, so.
But when the chip come in, it's going to put it in, right?
It was.
This will put the chip in when it come in?
Yeah, when they get the chip, they will bring it down here and put it in down here, so we don't have to take it anymore. So I would have agreed to go ahead and take the vehicle. So, yeah, they said October, November. It's been ordered probably since last year, last fall.
The supply chain is really, is really starting, is starting to hit us, you know, on a two-inch water meter. I'm, four months out to get one.
Wow.
That's like, the truck that we bought, the commercial-style chassis, you cannot buy one. They will not sell you a commercial-style chassis. But I got curious, reached out to people and a couple others, just to kind of see, no commercial-style chassis are being sold whatsoever anywhere. They just can't get them. And they actually had to up ours up to, from a 22 model to a 23 model truck, because they couldn't ever get ours built times. So they had to turn around, and it was a 23 model.
Hmm, okay.
Shorties everywhere, hurtin' everything.
Okay. Sandy, anything?
Well, I thought we were going to have a visitor tonight. And I kind of turned this over to James, but of course, he's with his wife, but Eddie Hancock.
Okay.
Where, or do, does anyone aware of what's going on? Has anyone else talked to him? I think AV maybe did.
Who?
Eddie Hancock, Eddie.
I know where he lives, but I mean, what is-
Well, not the daddy, but the son.
The son lives over in that subdivision right next to my farm.
He's building a house. He lived there, then he's moved, and now in, there's no sewer.
There's no lateral for, on that property. When Junior Thompson had built the subdivision, each lot-
It's behind Pizza Hut.
Right.
Each lot had a lateral. After the water sewer was installed, there was some resizing of lots. So when they was resized, it pulled the foot of it.
It was a way.
So we know there's one or two sewers, and that's his. But now his plumbers, we cut the street for them Friday, and they installed.
So everything is moving forward, then?
He's, we set a meter Thursday, the plumbers will put in the sewer Friday. That's the last, I haven't talked to Mr. Hancock, so I don't know.
Okay, okay. And I thought he was going to be here tonight, so I may not have anything to say at all. I texted him, but I hadn't heard back from him, so.
I think part of the issue is he's wanting, he doesn't want to have to pay for it, does he?
I think it was a bit of a shock to him that, and understandably so, especially in a relatively new-developed subdivision.
He would have- I think, here's, here's kind of the issue. He didn't buy the lot from Junior Thompson.
Right.
He bought the lot from another gentleman.
Third party that-
That bought it from Junior. So Junior, Junior didn't say anything wrong, because he didn't deal with Junior. But there was not sewer on the lot.
Was it, did the line change before the other fellow bought it? When was the line changed?
The line was changed after the water sewer was put in, before any lots were sold, period.
So after Junior put it all in, it would have changed?
Yes.
As he described it to me, the, there was no line. There was no line that came to his property. And what he was asking me was if the city was not responsible for extending the line, but, but he didn't just leave it to his property line. He was rather of the impression that the city was responsible now for extending to the property line and also to his house. So I don't think I misquoted what he said. The, the line comes, came how close to where his property line is?
How close?
Yeah.
14-foot? The bank, the vein, his house is on the west side of Thompson Drive, and the-
was rather of the impression knew the city was responsible now for extending to the property line and also to his house. So, um, I don't think I misquoted what he said. Um, the, the line comes, came how close to where his property line is?
How close?
Yeah.
Fourteen foot? The main, the main, his house is on the west side of Thompson Drive, and the sewer main is on the east side. So just the width of the street. Is, is the distance.
But where the, uh, line would have come to when the subdivision was put in?
It would, it would have got out of the right way of the road.
But where's that line at?
Uh, normally it's set up center ditch, center ditch.
No, no, I know, but where's the stub out at?
When Ju, when the lot size changed, it's, I've got the map center, it's a hundred and fifty, I think it was a hundred and fifty foot off the manhole from the mound going downstream. So it's actually hitting on another lot. So that's, that's going to, if you measure it out, that's probably going to put two taps on one lot.
No, I understand, but I just wonder how far into that other lot was his?
I don't know. Like, I can't answer that with that.
Is there any way that, who owns the other lot?
Was it from, or the line ended to his?
I have thirty-foot line. Where he's already, he's already got a half-foot on the lot now.
Well, yeah, but if the sewer line's out front.
Fourteen.
If the sewer's out front, it shouldn't.
It's, it's out front.
You'd have to dig across somebody else's yard, but I wonder if they would let them do it's what I'm.
Would you?
Well, probably. I mean, it helps, I mean, I wouldn't be so hard-nosed on helping somebody out like that under the circumstances. It would be just crossing the corner. Now, if there's a bunch of big trees or something to come up, it'd be different, but.